The broadcast is now starting. All attendees are in listen-only mode.
All right, I'm going to call this meeting to order. It is the, we're going to start with the Planning and Zoning Board meeting on Tuesday, April 23rd, 2024 at 7:02. I guess we'll start with the pledge. Okay, thank you. Sarah, you want to do roll call?
Of course. Okay, we have Chairman Adam Miller, Vice Chairman Lauren McClellan.
Present.
We have Commissioner David Leland.
Here.
Commissioner Cara Derry.
Here.
Commissioner Kamar Williams. We have Andrew Alba, our alternate one.
Present.
And then we have Jonathan Dickinson, our alternate two.
All right, so now I got to read this, right, Minnie?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So hello, welcome. I'm Vice Chair Lauren McClellan. I will be presiding over the meeting in the chair's absence. As we begin, I'd like to review a few housekeeping items for remote participation. We're still having remote participation, okay. Public comment will be solicited during each actionable agenda item. Once I ask for public comment on an item, please click Raise Hand in the GoToWebinar in order to make public comment. Before being individually identified, all members of the public will be muted. Village staff will announce the speaker by stating their name and unmute their audio to allow up to three minutes of public comment. When called, please state your name and address for the record and proceed with your comments, speaking clearly during your allotted time. Do not use the chat or question function in GoToWebinar as these functions will not be monitored during the meeting. Please limit background noise to the extent possible. And as a reminder, this meeting can be viewed live on Comcast Local Channel 18 or streamed at royalpalmbeach.com/youtube. Okay. So the first item on the agenda is for approval of the minutes of March 26th, 2024.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from March 26th.
I second it.
A motion from Commissioner Leland, seconded by Commissioner Alba. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimous. So the first item on the regular agenda is application number 2023-195AAR. La La Land signage, the applicant signorama on behalf of JBL Village Shops LLC is requesting architectural approval to install new wall signage for a property located at 10109 Southern Boulevard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Is the applicant present? Can you go to the podium over there, please, and give the Planning and Zoning Commission your name? Thank you. This is a quasi-judicial hearing, so I need to swear you in and also swear in staff for this item. Can you raise your right hand for me? Thank you both. Do you both swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you. I'll turn back to the Planning and Zoning Commission and ask for any ex parte disclosures on this item. Thank you.
Okay, Josu?
Could I think Josu Ledger for the record, planning and zoning? Application before you, 23-195AAR. The applicant is requesting architectural approval to install a new wall sign for a property located at 10109.
Josu, we're not getting it on our screen. Oh, there we go.
Is it good? Can you guys see it?
No, we're good.
Property is located at 10109 Southern Boulevard and situated within the Village Shops on 441 Plaza. This slide illustrates the proposed wall sign. Just a brief history on the development on this property itself. Subject property recently received an approval for a new master sign criteria from the previously accepted color, red, for the plaza to now black or white. So the board recently reviewed this, maybe a couple of meetings ago, that approved the now controlling documents for the signage on the property, which is the color is now black or white. And with that said, staff is not recommending, is recommending denial of this application because section, code Section 2-75.28F3 states that the incorporation of identifying characteristics of certain signage, such as trademarks or logos, will be given strong consideration in light of the importance such elements play within the current marketplace towards property identifying goods and services offered on site. The proposed signage on La La Land does not meet the current master sign criteria for the shopping center, which allow either black or white channel letters, nor does it have a registered trademark for the color or logo proposed. This concludes my presentation. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Do you have a presentation?
I do. I have just some brief remarks. First, thank you so much for having me here this evening. It's been a little bit of a long haul with this application, as I'm sure you hear from many of your applicants. We started back in 2023 with this application, and we were stymied by the lack of a master sign plan for this plaza. And in going back and forth with several different versions with staff, we finally came to the conclusion that if we met the requirements previously set in an older master sign plan for the code, for the size of the letters and the structure of the letters, that there would be some consideration for the brand of this particular business. Boca Family Entertainment owns a couple of these different locations in the South Florida area. I brought with me this evening just one sample, if I may share. Another location in West Boca where they use the same branding elements, just so that you can see this is in a one small, one location business. They are geared toward children for an indoor, fun, family environment, and the colorful nature of their sign is really critical to them in terms of promoting the look and feel that they need in order to bring the business into their facility. They've now been waiting since 2023 to get this resolved, and in an awkward kind of way, they're sort of victimized by the fact that there was a master sign plan being reviewed simultaneously, and they were handicapped being able to proceed because those decisions had not yet been made. And from what I understand, they were literally just made at perhaps your last meeting or the meeting just prior to that. So, given the fact that they do have other locations in South Florida that use the same brand, they now understand that trademarking their logo would be to their benefit. They're exploring that with their attorneys. They understand now that that's a process that could take up to a year to complete. And of course, to try to be in business without a sign for that longer period of time could be very detrimental. So, given all those circumstances, we're hoping your board would consider allowing them to proceed with the branded colors that we've presented here.
Thank you. So do we have anybody online? No. Is there any public comment here? Seeing none. Does the board have any discussion? I think I did that backwards, but that's okay.
That's okay. You're fine.
How many other locations did you say have this signage?
I believe there were three in total. There may be a fourth in the works, but I'm not certain about that.
And this is, the sign that you're using is a logo that the business uses regularly on all their...
Absolutely. It's very, it's used in all of their promotional materials, all of their advertising, and of course, it exists on the other, the other buildings.
Josu, and what are... I wasn't able to get over and look at the building, which I normally do, but are the other people that are in the center using that, that same rule for the black and white?
So it just, since the board just approved the master sign criteria, any new tenants will have to abide by that. However, this application has been in the works since that application for the master sign, they were going to have a tenant, it's the initial got approved before this. So this application will be considered if they, if they wanted to go back to the previously approved colors, which was red. So, but any new future tenants will need to either be black or white.
So there are various colors in the building now for the tenants?
Yeah, for, for other tenants. We do have a lot of reds, and of course, any tenants that has a trademark or, or national trademark, they're, they're, we give them consideration. The board considered them due to the nature of identifying their business and services offered, so.
Other questions?
I'm looking here in the notes. There, this isn't illuminated in the evening, right? You can't see it from in the evening at all?
These are illuminated letters, yes, sir.
They are illuminated.
Yes, they are. The LEDs are white underneath the graphics, so if you could look closely, you'll see that the color is surrounded by a white border.
Right.
So that's the part primarily that will light up at night.
All right.
Okay, I have, I have no questions. So does anybody want to make a motion?
I was going, originally going to agree with staff on this one, but they've established themselves at other locations with this, so I really don't have a problem with it.
I'll make a motion to approve application number 23-195AAR. Okay, motion by Commissioner Derry. Second by Commissioner Leland. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None? Passes unanimous. Congratulations.
Thank you all very much. Much appreciated.
You still have to get through Village Council.
Pardon me?
No.
This is the last?
This is the last one? Oh, good.
Go through the standard permit processing at this point.
I highly recommend that trademark. Okay, item number two on the agenda, application number 24-001AAR. Wells Fargo Bank signage, the applicant WCF permits on behalf of Royal Palm Center LLC is requesting architectural approval to modify the wall and monument signage to reflect rebranding and allow a color change of the ATM awning for a property located at 11707 Okeechobee Boulevard.
Is the applicant present? Or could you go to the podium over there, please? Could you give the commission your name, please, for the record?
My name's Mark Branchley.
Thank you, sir. As you saw, the previous applicant, this is also quasi-judicial. Thank you. Raise your right hand for me. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you very much, and I'll turn back to the Planning and Zoning Commission and ask for any expartes on this. Thank you.
Hey, Josu.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Application 24-005AAR. The applicant is requesting architectural approval to modify the wall and monument signage to reflect Wells Fargo branding and to allow a color change of the ATM awning. Our property is located at 11707 Okeechobee Boulevard, as shown here on the slide. This slide illustrates the existing front elevation, also the south elevation of the existing sign and proposed sign. This slide illustrates the existing rear elevation, which is the north elevations of the property and the proposed sign. This slide illustrates the existing and proposed monument sign. This slide illustrate the existing awning and proposed color change for the awning and materials. Staff is recommending approval of application number 24-005 as submitted. This concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Josu. Do you have a presentation?
No. Those slides that you saw are the, my present, my presentation. Wells Fargo has been changing their branding all over the nation from a yellow letter with red outline now to red letters or on a, on a plain background wall, or white letters if it's against a red backdrop. So this is interesting. They've, they're spending millions of dollars to change the color. So no longer will we see it. I was in North, North Palm Beach two weeks ago, and right next to North Palm Beach is Juno Beach. There is a Wells Fargo in Juno Beach that's already made the change, and many of the commissioners had noticed that this was coming before them on, at their meeting. And so it was very easy for them to visualize the color change. It's, it's very slight, going from yellow to red.
Great.
Instant, that's our change in our world, yellow to red.
I'm gonna do it the right way this time. So Commissioner Alba, do you have any comments? No.
No.
I have no comments either. I'm going to open it to public comment. No? Online, no? Okay.
Are you just going to sit there all night?
All right, I'm going to close public comment, and is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve application number 24-005AAR.
All right, motion by Commissioner Leland. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Alba. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes unanimous, 4-0. Okay, thank you. All right, next item on the agenda is application number 24-008AAR. Novu Dentic, yeah, Novu Dentic's signage. The applicant Signorama on behalf of RPBPC LLC is requesting architectural approval to install a new wall sign with color change for a property located at 11551 Southern Boulevard.
Thank you. Your name, sir, for the record?
Gil Strellick.
Thank you. Can you raise your right hand for me? I'll swear you in. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. I'll turn back to the commission and ask for any ex parte disclosures. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Application number 24-008AAR. Applicant is requesting architectural approval to install a new wall sign with color change for a property located at 11551 Southern Boulevard. This slide illustrates the existing sign to the left of your screen and the proposed Novu Dentic's with their logo signage. Staff is recommending approval of application number 24-008 as submitted, and this concludes my presentation. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Josu. Do you have a presentation, sir?
Just, the, the building doesn't have a sign criteria or master sign plan, so we're kind of, that's where we're at. So there was an urgent care MRI that had red letters, and red usually means, you know, emergency, urgent care, and the dentist would rather not have red. And he's not, unfortunately, he's not trademarked, but it's a really good-looking logo, and I would hope that the board approves it.
Thank you. All right, so I go to board discussion. Do you have any comments? No questions or comments?
I think it's a good-looking sign.
All right, I have no comments either. I don't think there's any public comment, but, no, no public comment, thank you. Is there a motion for this application? I'll make a motion to approve application number 24-008AAR. A motion to approve Commissioner Derry. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Alba. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Passes 4-0 unanimous.
Appreciate you, board. Have a great evening.
Last item on this agenda is application... Here it comes. Application number 24-011SPM Village Hall Public Art Location Change. The applicant Mario Lopez, I'm going to murder it, Pisani. On behalf of the Village of Royal Palm Beach is requesting a major site plan modification to relocate proposed art in public places from its previously approved location to a new location for a property located at 1050 Royal Palm Beach Boulevard.
Same thing, Mr. Pisani. I don't believe you were sworn earlier. This is quasi-judicial, so I need to swear you in. As staff, can you raise your right hand for me? Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I swear.
Thank you, and I'll turn back to the commission for any ex parte disclosures. Thank you.
Okay, good evening, Commissioners. Mario Lopez Pisani with the Planning and Zoning Department Village. The application before you is 24-011 Site Plan Modification, Village Hall Public Art Location Change. The applicant, which is the village, is requesting a site plan modification to relocate the proposed art in public places from its previously approved location to a new designated onsite location for a property located at 1050 Royal Palm Beach Boulevard. The slide that you have in front of you is the previously approved art in public places location. This next slide is the exact location within the reflection pool. And this next slide is the proposed art in public places location. This adjustment is proposed to address the challenges associated with installing art in a water feature to avoid additional unforeseen expenses impacting the art in public places budget and to optimize the artworks placement for its unique characteristics. And then, oop. Staff is requesting recommendation of approval be forwarded to the Village Council regarding application 24-011. And just to give you a quick reference, the proposed location is just directly north of the reflection pool. And that concludes this presentation.
Thank you.
If you have any questions, be happy to answer.
Commissioner Alba, do you have any comments?
Nothing.
No?
No, thinks it's a beautiful piece.
I have no comments either. There's no public comment. So is there a motion to approve, deny?
I'll make a motion that we approve application number 24-011SPM.
Motion to approve from Commissioner Leland. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Derry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Unanimous. Now, we have to do elections?
You do. I'm sorry, I didn't realize that that print on the agenda got super small. I'm not sure how that happened. But yeah, this is the meeting where you do elections for both the vice chair and the chair. So if you could take the chair first, and just a reminder, the way you do this, you can either do it by motion, which is the way you just approved all the items on your agenda. If it's done by motion, if there's a motion to be made to appoint someone to a particular seat, call for the second, and if there's a vote, that person becomes the chair or vice chair. You can also do it by nomination. If you do it by nomination, you take all nominations upfront, and then you vote on them in the order that they're made. If it is a nomination, you ask the person who's nominated if they're willing to accept the nomination, then ask for any other nominations, and go down the line and vote. Once you have all nominations on the floor. It's easier to do it by motion. That's how you typically do it. So I just wanted to give you both options, but with that, I'll ask you to elect the chair and a vice chair.
Okay.
And just a reminder, I'm sorry, I should have said this first. On the chair position, Commissioner Miller cannot be appointed to chair. He cannot serve two consecutive terms. So it needs to not be Commissioner Miller. And with that, I'll turn it back to you, Madam Chair. Thank you.
So are there any motions or nominations for chair?
I've been here a short time, but I would like to see you become the chair. How, how long have you served as vice chair?
A year.
A year? Well, it's time to step up.
So is that a motion to appoint Commissioner McClellan to the chair? Is there a second?
I'll second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unfortunately, you become the chair regardless of your opposition.
Alright, so then let's take the vice chair position.
I'll make a motion to appoint Kamar Williams to the vice chair.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Quick.
Don't let them miss the speed.
Okay, thank you. So with that, the next meeting of the Planning and Zoning Board is on Tuesday, May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four. Do I really need a motion to adjourn? Okay, so I need a motion to adjourn the meeting, please.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Okay, Commissioner Leland. Second by?
Aye.
Commissioner Alba. All in favor? All opposed. Good. Passes unanimous. Next, we move on to the art in public places hearing. So the record can reflect that the same people are present for this hearing. The first item is approval of the minutes of the August fourteenth, twenty twenty-three Public Art Advisory Board Meeting. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the August fourteenth Public Art Advisory Board Meeting.
Motion by Commissioner Derry. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Alba. All in favor? Aye. Passes unanimous, four oh. The first item on the agenda is application number twenty-four dash zero one six AAR. Village Hall Public Art. The applicant Mario Lopez Pisani on behalf of the Village of Royal Palm Beach is requesting architectural approval for the required art in public places at the new Village Hall. Specifically, the request is for commissioning the installation of an eleven-foot-tall, eleven-and-a-half-foot-wide, eleven-and-a-half-foot-deep sculptural work titled Rooted by artist Beth Nybek for a property located at ten fifty Royal Palm Beach Boulevard.
And Mr. Pisani, before you proceed, is the artist on the, on the computer?
I am. I'm here.
Ms. Nybek, is that you? Can you state your name for the record, please?
My name is Beth Nybek.
Thank you. This is a quasi judicial proceeding, so can you raise your right hand for me? I'm gonna swear you in. Is your right hand raised?
It is raised.
Thank you, ma'am. Do you swear from to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. And for the record, Mr. Pisani has already sworn and remains sworn for this portion of the meeting, so please proceed. Thank you.
Yeah, so the application before you is number twenty-four sixteen, New Village Hall Public Art. And we have the artist online. She's gonna give us a great presentation. So I don't know if Sarah, you can make her a presenter and...
And Ms. Nybek, while she's doing that, let me ask, I failed to ask the art advisory board if there are any ex parte disclosures to be made on this item. Thank you. Thank you, Sarah.
There we go.
Okay, everyone able to see my screen?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Okay, great. It is a wonderful privilege and pleasure to be with you remotely tonight to share this concept entitled Rooted. My name is Beth Nybek. I am a large-scale metal sculptor and public artist, and I create large-scale metal sculpture for cities and universities and airports and public spaces across the country. Part of the history and brainstorming that went into this piece, I had the opportunity to interview all of the members of the council. It was required by the project, but it was also really insightful and interesting to me to, to, to sit down and to speak with each one of these individuals and hear them speak about your community, the values that you guys have, things that you hold important, just really interesting background and, and history in the area and their own personal experience with your community. And of those interviews, there were common themes throughout. And it's always nice if you can hear different people articulating common threads in a different way. And there were three common threads that I kept hearing over and over again. And the first one was like parks, how important your parks are to your community and such, such a rich piece of pride and a lot of hours and time and money is poured into keeping those vital and a part of your community. Family is a huge part of your community, and then lastly, a sense of home. And so from those like three concepts or three common threads, I was able to think about your community and, and what you guys hold important to you. This is an image of water, from an aerial image of water, but this is this idea of the, the concept that I'm proposing is rooted, and it is inspired by the water and pathways through a leaf. And I think that these passageways, as you look at them, are common, visually common threads throughout nature and throughout our own body. If you look at our blood system and our nervous system, you'll see like common threads in, in this imagery. And so this is like, um, in this particular image, it's a sense of vitality and life and abundance. And so that's, that's what you see as it's reflected within this artwork. And so you can kind of see these like veins and waterways as it passes through this leaf structure. Now, part of my work, a huge part of it, is community engagement. And so oftentimes, I will go into a community and the artwork will reflect a certain story, a certain narrative that I work with your community to tell. And for this particular piece, the narrative that I wanna extrapolate from your community is a sense of home. All of, one of the things I found interesting about your community is it seems to me that there's a lot of transplants, people who have come here from somewhere else and have, have found this to be home. And so wherever we move to throughout our life, we are strangers at some point in time. And, and after a while, it becomes a sense of home to us. And so I wanna ask your community, when did this place feel, start to feel like home to you? Was it, now I gave, I'm giving some examples here, just to kind of like get the ball rolling in your mind of like, when, when did you feel rooted? When did you feel a sense of belonging? And it happens to different, differently to each one of us. And at some point, we become from being a stranger to being known and loved by the people around us. It's both deeply personal and also universal. And so I plan to engage with your community and ask them about their sense of home and when it became home to them. And so I'm gonna take some of these, their responses, and they become part of the sculpture. And so there are fifty spaces within this artwork, within, I call them the waterways, within the veins of this leaf. That's going to be the reflections of your community. So there's some spaces that are going to be much smaller. There'll be, you know, two-word responses. Summer parades, night walks, park festivals, grandma's cookies, whatever it is that it's a really shorter responses, kind of nestle in these little, these little spaces. But there's also bigger spaces where we can accommodate a much longer sentence within there. Our Nana cooks a Sunday dinner and all of our cousins come, or something along that, that, those lines as far as length is concerned. And those will be cut out of the metal and they'll be illuminated at night. But it's this, this idea that it's life, it's vitality, it's vibrant, it's personal, that it's also something that we can walk around and read the words of our community members, our neighbors, our friends, our family, and get to know the things that other people say, this is home to me and here's why. And it's a good reminder, it's not only for the community, but it's, can also be like a good reminder for, for city staff as well. I know that some days are a grind for you guys and it's hard to maybe remember, like, why on earth am I doing, doing this anyway? And sometimes it's a good reminder to see the words of your community and how important a sense of home is to people and that you guys are part of that. So not only is it a part, you know, a reminder for the community of why they're here and why this place is, is home to them, but also be a great reminder for city staff as well when those days are long and hard and you need a reminder of your community and why it's important, so you're doing the work that you're doing. So here's the specs, kind of nut, nut symbols I have on here, stainless steel or aluminum, aluminum, excuse me, to be determined. It is aluminum, eleven feet tall, eleven-and-a-half feet wide and deep. So one of the other questions that I asked council members was, this is always a fun question for me to ask people when we're talking about commissioning a new piece of artwork. I asked, what do you hope this work does for people? And the three common answers for that question were, we hope that it engages, we hope that it inspires people, and we hope that it's a connection point for people to stop and to read and to connect with one another. So that's, those were the three action steps that they wanted this artwork to, to reflect. And it's a, you know, it's a reflection of, of your, your model, a place, a place we call home. This is a rendering of a, a night view. So it'll be illuminated, uplit at night, and so that light will pass through the words that are cut out of the surface. Here's a few more renderings. And we'll get to take a look at the location one more time, and then I'll be happy to answer any questions anybody has. Oh, this is a view from up above. So the installation, I am in Kansas City, and so the piece will be built and constructed here and transported from Kansas City to Royal Palm. It will be installed on a concrete pad bolted down with anchor bolts. There's four in-ground lights that will provide the evening light. What you are looking at here, the exterior circle measures in thirteen feet in diameter. I've proposed it to be a six-inch pod to give it a little bit of elevation off grade. Here's just a further diagram of the lights and the bolts within the surface. Okay, so as we were looking at different locations for this artwork, we were hoping that to pick a location that is engaging, it's pedestrian-friendly, is really appealing from all angles, and a space to gather and connect was really important. You guys have already approved the location change, so that's great. But this is where another, another view of where it will be located. And just a couple more renderings here. Okay, I don't know the format, how you guys typically go from here, but I'm happy to answer any questions. Mario is also happy to answer any questions that pop up, but I'd love to open up the floor at this point.
Great, thank, thank you. So is there any board discussion? I'll start with you, Commissioner Derry.
And maybe, I didn't hear. How are the, the sayings and the words being decided on what's gonna be written in there? And who's making those decisions in the end?
So I think the artist can answer, but what we have come up with is that she will come to the village, perhaps for an event that's well-attended by village residents. And that section that she was presenting, where she's saying, how do we find home? Was it after you met your neighbors or what? So those are example questions that she will be asking. And so she'll gather that information from village residents, and that will inform the sort of phrasing and the letters that'll be inside of the sculpture.
Okay, and who's, is someone from staff that's looking at the end of what's gonna be chosen, or?
I'll be working with her, so probably as in, you know, in the event, gathering information, talking to residents. The decision, I don't know if we, I, yeah.
Number one, I do wanna say that I think the artwork is beautiful. I think it's a really cool concept in general. I love it. My only concern is, are we, are there certain things we're not allowing, saying? That maybe make, would feel people, make people feel, in one way. If we're, if they're saying something religious, for example, and we're not representing multiple religions or, you know, who, how are we making sure that there's not something possibly controversial in the words? Because words do hold meaning, whereas art is more subjective.
That's a good point. I mean, we can be guided by code. Code has, our code, Art in Public Places code has some rules about what we can show in the village, so we can use that as a first place, but I don't know if many.
And yeah, I'll add to that. I'm sure, and Ms. Nybek chime in here in response too, but there will be staff involvement once she's done the public kind of solicitation and, and gotten the suite of, of responses. There will be a dialogue back and forth with staff to ensure, just as you say, obviously, this village is not gonna put anything in the, in the sculpture that's contrary to law or contrary to someone's constitutional rights. I mean, it's not gonna go there. But Ms. Nybek, anything else to add there?
You know, it's a great question, and it comes up every time I do a community engagement project. And we don't want anything that is, anything that is life-giving and encouraging and reflective of people's hearts. And so that's, that's kind of a, the reason that I love to include communities, communities' words and their stories in it. Oftentimes, I have found this to be, I think a lot of things that cities worry about whenever they're commissioning a piece of art is kind of a controversial element. You know, what if we put this in and everyone's angry about it? One of the things I have found in this process of engaging within the community is people are really excited to be asked to be a part of something. And they, they have ownership and pride around the artwork. And so a lot of times when a piece is installed, sometimes I go into schools and the kids will be like, we have, this is up, it's available to see, and I was a part of it, let's go find my words on it. And there seems to be just like a, a great sense of pride and ownership over the piece. It is a concern of like, okay, we need to make sure that we said this was okay. And for me, like, I'm cutting these things out of, out of the surface of metal. So to change it, once it's installed, is, it's doable, but it's an absolute nightmare. So on my end and on your end, we wanna make sure that everybody can stack hands and say, we've looked up through it all. We say that it's great, we approve it, we will have, somebody will have a, a chance to look at it. It always can get into like an interesting space. So once I turn these over to, to folks, they, they wanna be the ones to choose which ones get included. And I'm just looking for a, make sure that nothing is offensive here and is reflective of your community. So I do get to choose what is there. You get to choose whether or not something needs to be omitted. That's, that's, that's how this dance goes typically. But yeah, I want everyone to like be really proud of this and excited about it. And I don't, I don't want, neither one of us want this to have something that has something that's written in there that we decide later on is not great. So we'll get, make sure that that all gets nailed down before it's installed.
Great, thank you.
Yes. I mean, the feedback, I was kind of hard to hear everything you were saying, but you're giving us a choice between aluminum and stainless steel. I would prefer stainless. Also, the structure when you are cutting out these letters, are you, what type of, what type of machine? Are there any rough edges? Is it an opportunity for a child to cut his finger? Because they're gonna be walking up to the statue and touching it and feeling it, so any input on that?
Yeah, great question. It'll be cut with a laser and the edges are really smooth. There's not gonna be any sharp edges that anybody could get themselves cut on. Good question.
Okay, so we could, we could ask for stainless instead of aluminum?
Um, it's already been decided that it will be aluminum.
It's already been decided?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
That's all.
I have no questions. Is there any public comment?
No.
Alright, is the, I'll entertain a motion.
Yeah, before we go forward, what I wanted to say is, we, staff recommends approval for the application with the condition that the artist provide the village with the engineered wind loads required to create, to put the piece up for permitting purposes.
And just one additional comment for the, you're sitting with your, your public art board hats on in this, in this moment, but this item does proceed to Village Council. So just so you know, she showed you, the artist showed you, Ms. Nybek showed you the installation details. The village is actually gonna be installing the concrete foundation. The village has agreed to install it. To Mr. Pisani's condition language there, we have not received, she's working on it, I think, we have not yet received the wind load engineering documents. We, we, the village, this is our, gonna ultimately become our art piece, so we have to pull a building permit. We need the engineering calculations. so we have to pull a building permit. We need the engineering calculations from her to ensure that it's installed and will not blow away in a hurricane. So that's why Mr. Pisani has added the condition to your approval tonight. As I said, you are recommending body tonight. This does move forward to the council next month, but that's the reason for the condition, just to make sure, and she is working on it. It's in the justification statement that she'll provide it to the village, but it does need to be a condition because we don't have it as of tonight's meeting.
So many, does a motion have to include that?
And you don't have to rephrase it, but yes, if your motion could state with the condition as stated by staff, that would be fine.
Thank you. Okay, so hearing that, do we have any motions?
I'll make a motion to approve application number 24-016AAR with the condition as stated by staff.
Thank you, Commissioner Derry. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Leland. So we have a motion to approve, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, passes unanimous, 4-0. With that, our next meeting of the Art in Public Places will be Tuesday, May 28th, 2024. So as we have a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
Do you have a second?
A second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
So we're adjourned. So the next meeting is the local planning agency meeting. So I have the record reflect that it's all the same members as the previous two meetings. Thank you, ma'am. The first item is approval of the minutes of the March 26th, 2024 local planning agency meeting. So we have a motion for that.
Come on, somebody else.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Alba. Is there a second?
A second.
Commissioner Derry, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, passes unanimous. Okay, so the first item is ordinance number 1040, proposed to amend, proposes to amend the village code of ordinances at chapter 22, subdivision of land, at section 22-3, to add an entirely new definition for the term engineering permit, an entirely new section 22-5, to provide regulations regarding the requirements and process for obtaining an engineering permit within the village, and amend chapter 2 administration at section 2-75.29, to add an appeal process for appeal of village engineer decisions regarding engineering permits.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So as is the case with all ordinances that are brought to you as a local planning agency, the language that you see there, anything that is double underlined is new language to be added to the village code. In this case, this is, I think, all new language, no strike through, but anything that's stricken through is proposed for deletion. So this is, this is an ordinance that kind of has come in tandem from both the community development department and also engineering. To address a couple of things, I guess I'll first start by saying that this is essentially the practice that the village is already utilizing. It just isn't codified. There are some provisions that are not currently in the code that community development has been having a hard time not having port in the code to enforce certain things. So currently, chapter 22 of the village code is the subdivision regulations, but those apply to new subdivisions. So I'll give you an example, restriping of parking lots. There's not clean language currently in the code to give code enforcement latitude to violate someone under the subdivision code because that technically applies to new development. Once the development's built, it then becomes a violation essentially of a development order, which is harder to enforce through code enforcement. So this ordinance is, number one, to memorialize and to codify the process that the village is currently using, but also to address some concerns and some issues that have come through code enforcement that don't have strong enough language currently under the code. So it is a little bit lengthy of an ordinance. I'm happy to answer any questions that you all have. It does, per the village engineer, Chris Marsh, this is the process that he is using to issue engineering permits, but certainly to my surprise, the word engineering permit is not currently in the village code. So this is, is, again, to address that and to help code enforcement with some things that have become a problem. So with that, I'll answer any questions. I tried to give you a bullet point summary in the agenda item summary. Obviously, this requires a permit process. That's what the village is doing now. It gives some, some more latitude for us to, if somebody violates a provision of an engineering permit, to go back to them by using the code enforcement process. But with that, let me stop there and see if you have any questions in terms of substance, and I can answer any of those that you may have. Okay. Go ahead.
I was going to say, we kind of talked about it a little bit, about the, under section 22-5, section A, there is language under number, number four, where it talks about construction of driveways. And the sentence says, "Construction of a driveway for one or two family dwelling units is exempted from this engineering permit requirement if a village building permit is obtained." I guess that language doesn't, isn't in for number three or number five, where it's talking about construction of asphalt, concrete, or paver brick surface. So if somebody has something in the backyard, same thing with number five, it talks about hardscape areas. So if somebody wants to extend their patio, the question is, is, are they also exempt?
So what I'll need to do on that one is confer with the village engineer. So what I'd ask you to do as LPA tonight is approve the draft that's before you, but if that is the practice that's currently happening, where there is a similar carve-out for those other two examples, I'll certainly add that in prior to first reading at the village council. I just don't know off the top of my head whether or not he's, he's got that carve-out now. So I don't want to agree to change it if that's not the intent and that's not the current practice.
Okay. Yeah, I mean...
I can bring it, and if you'd like, I mean, I can bring this back to you next month. If you have real heartburn about it, I can certainly do that as well. I'll defer to you.
I mean, I don't have, I personally don't have heartburn about it. I just think that if we're exempting something in the front yard, then we should be also exempting it in the backyard. That's just my, it's just my two cents.
Yeah, and if they're not doing that, I would be concerned about approving it tonight, though, if that's not the case, because I don't want to make it more difficult for the community to, because getting an engineer to come out to your house for a backyard project could be, and so if that's not something they're doing, I would definitely want to know that before approving any changes.
Yeah, and the language too, because it says, if a, if a village building permit is obtained, and maybe that's the answer, is if the village does not require a building permit for an expansion of a back patio, let's just say if they want to put paver bricks down.
There, there would be a permit required for that, because it increases the impervious area. So there, there would be a permit requirement there. So why don't, was that the extent of your questions, or did you have some others?
In the same vein, it would be under, under general obligations, it's M, number six, and this is just kind of a stupid thing, maybe? I don't know. It talks about private vehicles other than authorized company vehicles, may not be parked within or adjacent to a construction site. I just don't know what the definition of a construction site is, and if somebody is doing like a driveway, is that a construction site? Because that means then I can't park my, my private vehicle next to my, next to my driveway.
That is certainly not the intent.
No, I know it's not the intent. And maybe that's not, maybe that's not how, you know, a construction site is defined.
I, I would not think that that include, that, that scenario would not be a construction site, right? I think that we're talking about something a little more significant in terms of construction.
I just wanted to make sure.
So I guess what I would say then, why don't, why don't, if the local planning agency is amenable, why don't, if your preference is to approve this, why don't you approve it with the additional sentence being added to three and five, and I'll move that forward? That way, it doesn't, we're not, we don't lose a month, and it can proceed that way. And if there's change on first or second reading, we'll, we'll deal with it at that time. But I'll go ahead and add that, that last sentence that creates the carve-outs for one and two families to both sections 225A3 and 225A5.
Yeah, because that was my only concern with any of the changes, was making it more difficult for our regular homeowners.
And I don't think that's the intent. I just am not sure whether he's got that carve-out now. So let's go ahead, so that it can proceed tonight. I'll, I'll go ahead and, any motion to approve will be reflecting that change, to add that sentence to both of those additional sections.
Okay, so with that, is there any public comments? Seeing none. Is there a motion? I'm sorry?
Does this affect existing patios that are there that were not permitted?
No, so this, anything that's there now that doesn't have a permit would be a non-conforming patio or structure, just like anything that's currently constructed that's in, not in conformance with your zoning code, would be a non-conforming structure. This, this would apply to things going forward.
And if you wish to install a sidewalk on your property, so I have, in my home, I go from one door to another door, which I'm walking in green area. At some point, I like to put a sidewalk. Is that something that's to be permitted also?
So when you say sidewalk, you just mean a pathway between two doors? Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Yeah. It, it depends on the square footage, I think. Don't quote me on that, but if it increases the impervious, typically you have to get a building permit to do that. And then with the carve-out, I don't think that it would apply, since you've added the language that, that this agency has requested be added. But the goal is not to have onerous permitting requirements. We're just trying to memorialize and codify the current process. So I think with the additions to sections three and five, that your example would not require this. And you may not even need a building permit. It depends on how big the proposed pathway is.
Okay.
Okay. So with that, any other comments? So is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 1040 with the additions to three and five as stated by Commissioner...
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, seconded by Commissioner Leland. All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed, passes unanimous. The next meeting is Tuesday, May 28th, 2024. Do we have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Make a motion?
Motion by Commissioner Alba, seconded by...
I'll do the second.
Commissioner Leland. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson.